Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Paul, this meeting of the Westminster Select Board to order. If anybody in the public would like to comment, just say so and please give your name. Paul will let you in. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, the minutes of the meeting at December 16th.
I moved it, we approved the minutes as printed. Okay.
Moved by Craig and seconded by Sheldon to approve the minutes of the meeting of December 16th. Is there a discussion? Let's vote then all in favor. Aye.
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 Accepted, thank you. Communications and public comments. The letter from the Westminster West Library. Is there anyone from the library who wants to speak?
I'll be, if I can answer questions, I will.
Well, I think the information is in your packet and they're going to be, if we adopt the meeting warning, they will be asking for...
Seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars, in addition to the seven thousand dollars that's in the budget.
Yes.
So, okay, I mean it's spelled out pretty clearly to me.
And the reason for it.
Isn't it in addition to eight thousand five hundred dollars?
Eight thousand four hundred, I think it is.
Whatever.
Yeah. It is because they're doing, they're doing a library, it's, the library is going to be hugely what am I trying to say?
Expanded.
Expanded by use of this kind of stuff that we're doing right now. And there will be access to all the books that are, that are all over the state. And also, I think that this would be available for the library in the center too.
I think Lisa talked about doing more outreach to the rest of the town too.
Yeah, yeah.
Great idea.
Will the school be using this too? I mean, are they tied into the school where they, so if they send kids from Westminster West, there's correspondence and all that? I mean, libraries are really for a lot of children to use too, you know? I was just curious, even though they have one in the center school with their parents and the school teachers all be tied to knowing what's going on?
Frankly, I'm sure that that will be available to the school as well.
I think the fact that the library will be online too, their holdings will be online will be extremely helpful to everyone in town, so.
So, Madam Chairman, I did reach out to the public library, or to the library, one of the board of directors. Because it was my understanding, and it was, unless everybody else misunderstood, that the seven thousand dollars was mostly going to be for the librarian for an extra two hours a week for the year, which they told me that that wasn't true, that it had to do with all of the startup costs, which is on the bottom paragraph of this letter, which actually leads me to more questions, because they're asking for another seven thousand dollars. It says we've already raised more than half, they've raised fifty six hundred dollars approximately for our startup costs. They're asking for another seven thousand dollars, which is more than, so I guess I'm not really sure how much their startup costs really are, but at any rate, they said it wasn't just for the librarian, it was for all the things that were involved in it. So that clarified it in my mind a little bit, but that's not, as I recall during the meeting, that's not what they told, or that's not what was expressed to us.
Yeah, if, I don't know if you have your packet Sheldon, but it...
I do.
Yep, so they have a pretty good explanation of startup cost and then ongoing annual. And you're right, the main increased cost is for more librarian hours. It's unclear whether it's five hours now and they're going to fifteen hours, or to increase it by five hours, it's a little unclear, but anyway, that's...
There's thirteen now and they're going to increase to fifteen.
It's thirteen now, okay.
That's what she told me.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily going by this letter, that's what she told me on the phone.
Okay.
That's only two hours, this is saying they're going to add five hours, or maybe they're not going, two different things, one is when you're open and the other is when a librarian hours is five hours. So if they were ten and they went to fifteen, that makes sense, but whatever.
There's also, it's a little mysterious here, additional cost, if additional pickup needed, that's another one thousand one hundred dollars, which is the second, I'm not, I'm not sure, that might be the courier, I guess, who has to deliver books maybe? Anyway, that's also a cost, but they've done quite a bit of fundraising already. Anyway, there's good information available, this will be available, right Russ, to anybody who's interested in knowing more?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion on that? Unfinished business, solar project review. I think it looks like a couple people from the Norwich company are here.
Good evening, yes Martha Staskis and Hannah Boudreaux from Norwich are here.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Committee for having us back on your agenda. We're following up on conversations we've had previously, as well, and to report on other activities. We met with the Select Board on Monday night, and they have approved the preferred site designation for the proposal.
Planning Commission, Martha.
What did I say?
Planning Commission.
Oh, did I say Select Board?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. No, the Planning Commission, thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself. And then on January 5th last Tuesday, because of the time of the year and sequencing of this Public Utility Commission process, I met with the Wyndham Regional Planning Commission, who as part of that, the preferred site process, you might recall, what we're seeking is approval from this Planning Commission and the Select Board of Westminster, as well as the Regional Commission. And so the Regional Commission, Wyndham Regional Commission reviewed the proposal and issued a voted, motioned a conditional approval, if you will, they said if they don't want to overstep the town, if the town approves it, they approve it. So they approve it if the town designates it as a preferred site, they will designate it as well. We also, on just before the holidays kicked in heavily, we went and met with surrounding landowners, we met with the owners of the meat factory, Abdul and Ali, who are quite supportive. We met again, or met again face to face this time with Tanya White, I've spoken with Tanya Lester before. We met with Raymond White and Meredith Warden, who live just beyond them on Newcombe Road. Spoke again with Clark Wells, as well as we met with Bridget Cadell, who owns the parcel to the south of this property. And answered some questions, or answered questions and have have received support from everybody. I think we, I appreciate the communications we were able to have with folks on the surrounding parcels.
What was the Planning Commission, does Planning Commission have any comments or...
Please. Pardon? I thought somebody was speaking. I don't know, Russell, you want to summarize that, or?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, I was trying to get another person on, on to the meeting. The Planning Commission showed some concerns and, but typically went back to, the site is feasible and, and can be used for solar without too, too much obstruction of scenery and etc. Voices of concern were for animal corridors, all the way to how much power can Green Mountain Power actually accept to the access to the site. They showed a new one, and Martha has assured us that they're going to use the one that's already there, which would be less intrusive to the wetlands that is also there. And overall, the Planning Commission approved the request with the stipulation and the knowledge that this is not the only shot they'll have to help make sure that this is, the site is done and done appropriately for the town of Westminster.
So when will the next step come then? What is, when will that?
So if the Select Board approves or designates this as a preferred site, then we will move forward with filing an application to the Public Utility Commission, which would go in before the end of January. And once that goes in, the Public Utility Commission first has to deem the application complete, meaning that we've addressed all of the Public Utility Section 248 criteria, as well as their Rule 5.100 net metering application criteria. And that takes typically like a week. And then the entire application is mailed to all of the adjoining landowners and regulators, the Planning Commission, the Select Board, the Regional Commission, and the state agencies, the Agency of Natural Resources, Agriculture, Division of Historic Preservation, Public Service Department. And then all the parties have thirty days to comment again, and that's, I think what you're asking is, that would be another opportunity for the town to comment and provide feedback or, or comments.
Martha, when was that deadline?
It's thirty days after the Public Utility Commission deems the application complete.
So it'll be the end of February?
Uh, yes, well, assuming they deem it complete within the first week, it might be March.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
So I, go ahead. I was just gonna say, because of this deadline, I suspect there will be quite a few applications going into the Public Utility Commission from across the state, and that may slow down, it's a guess, but that may slow down their deeming application. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're like fifty pages, they're, they're a couple inches or an inch thick or so, so they gotta read through all of them, make sure we've met all the criteria, so I just don't know if it'll be five days or ten days.
All right, any, any discussion, any comments?
Question to Russell.
Yes.
I was looking back at the minutes from the last meeting, and it said that this project will pay taxes to the town of Westminster based on production. I'm not, and then it says four to six thousand dollars, and that's in addition to taxes, the land tax, because that doesn't disappear, does it?
No, it does not.
I think there's a correction in there, sorry. So the project will pay taxes to the town based upon an assessed value. The project will also pay taxes to the State Education Fund based on production. And the land pays taxes to the town.
Okay, so taxes based on the assessed value of the project and of the land, and also to the state for the state education.
Right, yeah, and that's based on the production, I heard the phrase, based on production, that's the part that goes to the State Education Fund.
Thank you.
So the town, just to follow up and to clarify my, my thinking about this, is so the town, so the forty six thousand dollars goes to the State of Vermont Education Fund?
No.
Or whatever. And...
Go ahead, Martha.
The four to six thousand that I referenced last time is what I expect, the, the equipment, the asset to pay in property taxes to the town. The, I didn't do the math, I have to apologize, the State Education Fund is for, it's a, it's a percentage based upon the kilowatt hours produced, and that's what will go to the state, and I don't have that number in front of me, I'll be honest.
That's all right, I'll hold it to it.
Okay.
So the, so the four to, the four to six thousand dollars then is, is the equipment that's based on the site, plus the taxes on the property, correct?
Correct.
So is, so how is the property, once these solar arrays there, it goes from a woodlot to something else? So how is it assessed by the appraiser? And I'm sure that you've done more than one of these projects in the state of Vermont, so how does that change the land use? The way the town of Westminster is taxing it?
Yeah, so typically, it shouldn't change the land value, because the equipment is paying the additional tax. But I have seen it go, each town is different, that's the good part of Vermont. I have seen it go differently, and I'm not sure how familiar the Westminster assessor is with solar projects, so we would have, we would like to have a conversation with him, or her.
We have quite a few solar projects, so that should be...
That's good.
More discussion? So the idea is that if we voted on this, it would be sort of giving our preliminary approval, but if it turns out there's more information that comes in, that we might want to look at it, we'd have a chance to say, you know, we're not so happy with this idea.
Yeah, I actually asked a legal counsel for, to help me explain this preferred citing, because it comes up numerous times. And if you would bear with me to let me read a couple of sentences here that she sent to me, I think it might help. Because the preferred citing designation is, is a term that's, that's been created by the Public Utility Commission to affect the rate, the net metering rate that the system receives. And so, let me just read what she wrote. Signing the preferred citing letter is unrelated to the town's ability to participate and raise 248 issues, Section 248. It simply means the site is recognized as suitable as a general matter as should be given the preferred citing adjuster. But obviously, a complete 248 petition with supporting materials is required to demonstrate compliance with the applicable 248 criteria. The town letter does not address that, and therefore they reserve the ability to comment and even present evidence as to whether they believe the project does or does not comply with Section 248.
So really, it's a comment on the site and not the project?
Yes, thank you. That's why I needed help, I just wasn't explaining it, I knew it.
Good, that was helpful.
Hey Susan.
Yep, go ahead Nate.
Yeah, sorry Nate Sotter. Martha, how big's the project?
It's a five hundred kilowatt array? Is that the answer? I don't, when you say big, what, what unit?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
A question I have is, the site's there, but how does the power come out? Does, do we upgrade the power lines, does it come down the road, or does it come out with a different access?
So, Green, we will, Green Mountain Power is studying that right now, and that will be part of the application, there'll be a feasibility study that will accompany the application, which is the results of their work, but the idea is there's three-phase power right there along Westminster Back Road, and so the power will come out onto, there's a pole, there's a line, a single-phase line, I think it's single-phase, going up Seafood Lane, and we would, Green Mountain Power would install a pole right there in the Seafood Lane parking lot, and then connect down Seafood Lane to Westminster Back Road, to the three-phase power.
So there won't be an open path where you would all of a sudden look up to the woods, even though there wasn't a road there, you would now, you would have a path for the power you're not going to see up there, because that's what originally you said, there would be a tree line there protecting it.
Right, correct, so as we, see with the Planning Commission, we talked about what we're going to do, if you have your site plan in front of you, we're going to move the road up to where there's already an existing culvert and access, it's like a woods trail. And the interconnection or the line, GMP line extension will actually go right overhead that access, so it'll be horizontal, if you will, it'll be east-west to the pole that's on Seafood Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments, questions?
You need a motion, or what do you want to?
Yeah, I think we need, if we want to, a motion, if we approve this as a preferred site, I, I see no problem with it at this point, I don't think that site's going to be used for anything else, and it seems fairly out of the way, so, yeah, a motion would be good.
I move that we give preliminary approval based on the knowledge presented to the Select Board as of January thirteen twenty-one. On this particular project.
Moved by Sheldon, seconded by Craig to give our designation of a preferred site to the project, and...
We ought to have a name of the project, that's the only thing that...
What is the name of your project Martha?
It's called Westminster Back Solar.
Westminster Back Solar, as presented by Norwich.
Technologies.
Technologies, thank you. More, more discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Was there, was there a no in there? No, I guess we're unanimous.
Was there, I'm sorry, was there a...
I don't think so, I think that everyone said aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Martha.
Thank you folks, thank you for your time, greatly appreciated.
You're welcome.
Bye now.
Warning for the town meeting. You all had a warning in your packet, but Russell got a version back from Larry, which has been updated with some verbiage, so he can read that or read the changes. Do you want to do it that way, Russell?
We can, it's up to you guys.
Yes, why don't you tell, what change, where the changes have...
Article one, everybody missed it, it's March 2nd, twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty. Article two is fine. Article three, he changed it a smidge, removing the amount raised by taxation is lowered by a hundred thousand, he placed it to offset by a hundred thousand for fiscal year nineteen, nineteen to twenty of the general fund surplus, so he just moved it from the bottom to the, to further into the language. Article four, he did not touch, other than he's going with shall the voters this year, not to see if the voters will. Article five, the exact same thing, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. Article six is exactly as written. Article seven is exactly how it's written. Article eight, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. Article nine, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. Article ten, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. Article eleven will stay the same. Article twelve shall stay the same. Article thirteen, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. Article fourteen will stay the same. Article fifteen will stay the same. Article sixteen, shall the voters, not to see if the voters. And he removed, this fee will be annual. He did not, didn't like that, so that's been stricken. Article, that's, I can read that if you're wondering what I'm talking about, sorry, that's the West West Library to join the Catamount Consortium, he didn't like that we put in there, this fee will be annual. Article seventeen, he shortened it by, excuse me, he lengthened it by a little bit. Shall the voters of the town of Westminster elect five town residents to a Westminster Town School Board, a district school board, with staggered terms as exited prior to the forced merger of Westminster into the North, Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. So we had kind of the Reader's Digest version of it, he kind of...
Has existed, not exited?
Yeah, has existed, yeah.
Existed, sorry, did I say that? Sorry. Staggered terms as existed prior to the forced merger, sorry. And then eighteen is exactly the same. So again, it's more wording than it is anything else.
Susan, sorry, could I, could Russ go back over Article three, please? I don't know what the changes were.
Article three is, is the budget for the town. It used to say, shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize the total general fund expenditures for operating expenses, of which one million five hundred and four shall be raised by taxes, and six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty by established revenues for the fiscal year, beginning July 1st and ending June 30th, this amount, to be rate, this amount to be raised by taxation is lowered by a hundred thousand, so what he did is he moved the hundred thousand up, so he wrote, shall the voters of the town of Westminster authorize total fund expenditures for operating expenses of two million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars to be offset by a hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year 2019 dash 2020, general fund surplus, and one million five hundred and four thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars shall be raised by taxes, and six hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars by estimated revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Millie, for your clarity, I can send you this new document if you, if you'd like.
I think I have it, but that would be great, thank you.
All righty, I can do that.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a comment and make a change to Article sixteen, possible?
Article sixteen.
Yeah, so that's about the Westminster West. Yeah, so that's about the Westminster West Library. Where it says, this money will pay for additional hours for the librarian as per the network's requirements. I'm not sure that that's exactly what they're asking for. I would propose that it says, this money will pay for additional hours for the librarian and additional annual costs associated with joining the Catamount Library Network. Because it's not just the librarian, it's additional costs.
Okay, can you read that again?
Yep. The last sentence, this money will pay for additional hours for the librarian and additional annual costs associated with joining the Catamount Library Network. Does that sound right Toby?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion of the morning, questions, comments?
Can we go back to three? The wording on this, I don't know, I guess I'm thick-headed. It says that the expenditure of $2,128,140 to be offset by 100,000 is what it says. But then when you add up the two numbers, it does, shouldn't it be one of those numbers, $100,000 less in taxes because it's been offset by 100,000? A little confused on that. If you take the 1504 and the 623, it adds to 2,128. But in this statement saying that it starts out with 2,128, then we're going to offset it with $100,000. Then we're turning around asking for 2,128 in taxes. How does the 100,000 play into this?
Because the budget is $2,228,145.
Oh, so it didn't start with that, then lowered it to that. Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? Which is actually higher. Okay.
I think we got the budget here somewhere.
That did seem a little confusing in the way, because it never shows you the 2,200,000.
Probably got it somewhere.
Hey Susan, it's Cynthia. Can I interrupt for a second?
Go ahead.
Are you saying that you took the 100,000 off the operating expenses? Huh? Sorry Russ, what did you say?
I think that's what he did.
No, it should be, you have to have the total number of this, your total budget has to be in that article. Then you subtract out the number of estimated revenues that you have other than taxes. And then the difference to be raised by taxation is where you account for that 100,000.
I'm agreeing with you 100%, so we should have asked for 2,228,000 to start with. Then we would say being lowered by 100,000 from the fiscal year, being lowered by 623 by the state, with a balance of 1,504 to be raised by taxation is what we're trying to do, right Cynthia?
Yeah, I agree Craig. I mean, the way I used to do it is 100,000 used to be part of my estimated revenues.
Yeah.
So the 623 would be 723. And the difference is what's raised by taxation. But you have to have the actual number of the expenses, otherwise we're actually telling you that you can only spend 2.18 million.
I agree with you 100%, that's why I went back to it.
Good catch.
I'll go back to Larry with it and get that corrected before you guys sign it.
Thank you. Thank you Cynthia.
Thank you, yep. I think I got a little scrawlings on it. Any more discussion on any of the articles, questions? Okay.
I'm just curious about one thing. I must be reading this wrong. Article five and Article seven both have to do with the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund, right?
No, one has to do with the Capital Improvement Fund and the other has to do with the Bridge Rehabilitation.
No, but five and seven are both bridge.
Yeah, that's what I'm, why, why, why are we, do we have two of these?
Because one is being taken from the general fund surplus of last year.
So every year since I've been here, we've put $15,000 into the bridge fund. But because we have some bridge expenses, big bridge expenses, we decided to ask to take part of the surplus, $10,000, and also put that into the Bridge Rehabilitation Fund. So that would be 25,000 that would go into that fund this fiscal year, that fiscal year. So they're just two different sources.
I know, it seems like it ought to be one article, but because of the.
Well, one we're asking to raise taxes and the other one we're asking just to move the money that's already been there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, no problem. Comment, comment, suggestions? So do we vote on this, Russ, now or do we wait until the final version is?
I, if you're not comfortable with this, then we have to have a special meeting because I have to have it posted between January 17th and January 27th.
Why don't we?
30 to 40 days.
Why can't we pass it tonight with the acknowledgement of the correction of the wording on Article three? I think we agreed to that. We just need to have Russ change the wording on it. Outside of that, I'm comfortable making a motion that we accept the town warning as printed with the correction to the verbiage on Article three.
Three and 16.
And 16, correct, yes.
And 16, okay. Is there a second to that motion?
A second, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the warning for the annual meeting with the corrections on Article three and Article 16 as discussed. All, any more discussion? Yeah. I hear Sheldon tuning up.
You've got a lot more corrections than that, so you really got to throw in four, five, eight, nine, 10, 13. I mean, those are all corrections to this warning.
I don't know which one you're looking at.
Minor corrections, because you're changing to see if the voter is to shall. So I mean, every one of those is a correction to this warning. So you can't just correct, you know, change those too, and you really, you got to have them all in the same.
Incorporate Larry's corrections, that's what you're saying. Because that's, the version we're talking about is the one that you got in your packet. That's what you're saying.
Sheldon, did yours say February 29th at the top? If so, you got the old one.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the old one. The new one says, that's not in the right day, there is no February 29th. The new one is February 27th with most of the corrections in it. The only thing they missed was March 2020, which should be March of 2021.
Which is a minor, that doesn't bother me. Alright, that's fine, thank you.
You're good with that? Okay. Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted, thank you.
I will go door to door to get signatures very soon.
Alright. Town meeting, options for procedure. I think we.
The state still has not come up with exactly what we can and can't do. There's a lot of literature out there. The clerks received on the 28th of December, a law currently does not permit municipalities to hold an annual meeting via Zoom or other remote electronic means. But just this evening on the news, I heard that there is towns that are going to do it remotely. So there's still a lot of back and forth. In your packet, you have a letter from Patty and Pauline stating their opinion about the Australian ballot part of the election. Keeping it to the regular date of March 2nd and strictly voting on the two school budgets and the people running for positions. And if the town meeting can be held on the February 27th date, then so be it. But if it can't be, then postponing it to warm weather such as mid-May. So I think this is still a work in progress. I know we have to know sooner than later. They said by Friday the 15th, we'd have a few more answers for us to go through. I asked Larry about this and he stated that worst-case scenario is, is that you approve the warning as it's drawn with the February 27th date. And worst-case scenario is you open that meeting on the 27th with some huge publications explaining that we've moved it to a May or whatever date further in the year. But you open it and you don't close it, you resume it. Say it's going to, this meeting will be resumed in, at such and such a date. So that's why he gave us the two thumbs up on the warning to do it as we have got it presented. And we can still make this decision soon. But we can still do it and change it. So it's a work in progress. Pauline, you're on the call. Do you have anything to add to that?
Pauline? She's there.
Unmuted.
She's unmuted, I think now. Can you hear Pauline? We can't hear you. There you go. Oh, we can't hear you. Can you have a? Colin, can you, are you there? Oh. It's your mic, Pauline. Can you hear us?
Does she know where the mute is?
Yeah, she does. She's done this a lot.
Oh yeah, of course.
Maybe we just want.
I think she said she's all set.
Okay, we have her letter. They essentially would prefer Australian ballot on February, whatever the date is.
Second, March 2nd.
Yeah.
And the floor vote either on the normal date of the February 27th, if possible, or postponing it until the early spring.
I mean, my preference is if things were as they are, as they are now, I'd love to postpone it so we could have a decent discussion. But have the Australian ballot vote that day. But essentially, we don't have to do anything tonight, is that the deal?
We can't do anything tonight. Vernon has already voted to postpone their meeting. And they don't, they don't have clarification on that, but they did go to that length and pick a date. But.
Hey Susan, this is Russ Lazaric.
Yep, go ahead Russ.
Yeah, I'm looking at an article right now that was posted yesterday. The, from my house passed yesterday to allow town meeting to move or send ballots by email, and it's going to the Senate.
Wait, ballots by email?
Send ballots by mail and move town meetings. That passed the House yesterday. And was going to the Senate today.
Right, so.
So the rest of the point, it sounds like we'll have guidance shortly.
Yeah, 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 so, okay.
Susan, can I add something? Cynthia?
Yep, go ahead.
So I've been querying people as they've been calling into our support line to see like what other towns are doing. And my understanding is a lot of them are doing the Australian ballot but having a Zoom informational meeting. So I don't know if that's what Russ was, maybe, maybe what people were referring to when they said they were having some type of virtual meeting, is just the discussion part of it. So that was three towns I think I talked to today. But I don't, I am not in favor of you guys putting the February date out there. There's nothing that's going to change between now and February. Because with the confusion of how it went last year and people didn't know where it was going to be and it kept getting postponed, and it wasn't your fault or anybody's fault, it was just the nature of what went on. It was really difficult to figure out when it was going to be and where it was going to be. And I'm not saying that couldn't happen again, but we all know that February date, we're not going to all be able to gather somewhere. That's just not going to happen. So I don't, I'm, I don't care either way, whether it's Australian or postponement. But I think putting out that date of February is misleading. I don't think it's just going to cause more problems than.
Right, well, I think we'd agree that voting for town officers by Australian ballot is, because we usually don't have discussion about that, I mean.
Right, these towns are moving everything to Australian ballot, and they never have had that before.
Yeah, I guess I would not be in there. As far as the date, I mean, it seems like if we're going to approve this warning, that we have to have some sort of date. I'm not sure if you keep it open, open, open.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if we kept it February 29th, so what would have to happen that day, Russ? A certain number, who would have to show up to say we're recessing this meeting?
I'm sure it's the select board and the moderator.
The moderator and the select board.
I would assume.
Yeah.
But again, if we know by Friday, we will have the warning corrected by the town report. But it will be still on the warning, that date that you assigned, unfortunately. I don't know how to change that. I can ask Larry if the date can be stricken, if that's something that wants to be.
We put a, like a one-page update on the front, somewhere in there, they're saying that that we put this date not knowing it was actually going to happen or something. You see what I'm saying?
Like a tentative date, yeah. But I think there does have to be some pretty intense communication with the public right along. It won't be perfect, but letting people know what's going to happen.
If Pauline could speak, she's already talking about a mail-out card that possibly could be sent with a grant that we've received and that we could possibly get.
I got your chat, Pauline, sorry. Yeah. I guess she's not going to, I was going to read her chat if she was going to say something, but, okay.
Susan, you keep saying the 29th, it's the 27th.
Oh, okay, I have the old, I'm sorry, I have the old.
Well, there is no 29th, so that would really mess everybody up.
Okay, I just changed it. I have the old version. Alright, so we're still waiting to hear. Anything else on that subject? New business, town reappraisal, options, funding, bids.
You asked that it be on the first meeting of January. Ed from Nimrock attached a letter in your packets. Also, he gave us a proposal for the reappraisal for the town. And also I sent the 2020 equalization study results, which actually did go down. Think it would be well in our interest to, to do it now.
The full reappraisal, is that what you're saying?
Yes, because of so many properties being bought and sold so quickly. This would put us back on uneven playing field. And some of the things that they're still finding from the last reappraisal that weren't quite accurate. It would put us back on the, on the mend.
You still think we're just delaying it a year or so to get this COVID-19 now to, I mean, who wants anybody coming to their house now? You know what I'm saying?
If you read the, the report, this is a two-year proposition. So the first year, they wouldn't even be looking to get into homes or properties. They would be literally doing like an assessment within-house.
I have a question. And my question is, when the, the property values are unusually high right now. And if we do a reappraisal with those high figures now, they're not likely to last, you know, there's, I'm not sure that that would, maybe I'm getting it wrong. But I think that the quality of the, whatever it's called, that particular thing.
Reappraisal.
Well, I know it's a reappraisal, but what their figure that they're using, that, that, that triggers a reappraisal. You, you understand what I'm saying? There's a figure that they say, once it reaches this amount, then you're not getting proper.
Common level of appraisal and the coefficient of dispersion.
O coefficient of dispersion. Yeah, and this is, you know, it's an unusual time, so I'm not so sure that this is going to last the way it is. Right now, it's, people are selling. They, they have no properties to sell anymore because they're all sold.
So what you're saying is it's more reasonable to do a reappraisal when, when property values are more
When they balance out, it's, you know, it's something that's reasonable.
Or stable anyway.
Yeah, stable, right. That's my feeling about it.
That's what I kind of agree with. I just think that we need a little time for this economy to get stable out as far as real estate is.
I don't think this is something we need to rush into right now. Could you say why you think it is important, Russ?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not on the, I'm impartial here. I, I don't have an opinion about whether we should do it or shouldn't. This is just information I've passed on to you from what you requested.
Okay.
Why don't we? Why don't we, I moved to table it for a year.
I would agree to that.
Do we need a motion on that anyway?
It wouldn't hurt to have it in the minutes that you guys voted to table.
Yep, it's been moved by Sheldon and did you second?
Seconded by Kevin.
Seconded by Kevin to table the issue of town reappraisal for a year. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I'd like to say something about the reappraisal.
Yep, go ahead Fran.
Okay, thank you. We, the, 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 there was somebody who came before us and they wanted to have their property, value of their property lowered. And there was, there was nobody that came in from NIMRIC to explain why the value had been changed or to explain anything. The listers didn't know anything. And I'm curious about if we're, if we're considering a reappraisal, which I know is being tabled now for at least a year. But I'm just wondering, are we with one company all the time? And, and the listers need a little bit of support from whoever they're getting the reappraisal from.
I missed something in the middle there. You, you were tuned out, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm having a lot of, my Comcast just keeps going in and out, so I'm not sure. I apologize.
Okay, so you said something. Yeah. Are you?
Can you say that again?
You said something about one company and support for the listers and it was kind of
Right, the listers need support when a value has been, has been changed of a property. Or if the, if there is a, an appeal, the listers, they come in, they have no idea why a property value has been lowered. And we're all just sitting there, we, we have to make a decision, but there's no information. The listeners are not given it and we don't get it. And so it's kind of hard to, to, to approve or deny an appeal or to come up with a, a like value of a property that was reduced by NIMRIC and not knowing why. And my next, that's my, my opinion. My next statement is, are we actually getting opinions from people to help the listeners or do we just keep sticking with NIMRIC?
I believe that's who we call on. Is that correct, Russ?
Why don't we, why don't we get bids from other companies like we do for other things?
Well, is that a separate function?
Of course it is.
Absolutely. There's other companies, of course. But at this point, it's a, we're going to wait a year, so that's something to consider.
Right, is there a process to get? Is there a process?
Other appraisers, appraisal companies and ask them for a bid?
Very possible.
For the appraisal, yes. Yeah, no, I totally agree with that. I guess I'm just thinking about the help for the listers. Is there a process for them to request information?
We don't have that many appeals, so I would think NIMRIC could have their appraiser here for an appeal to explain the raising or the lowering of property values at that time. If we had 25 appeals in a year, I could see, you know, a, you know, maybe a problem with NIMRIC showing up for it. But if we've only got one or two in a year or less, or, you know, within that category, then that's who we're contracted with. He should be, he should be able to sit down with this in an appeal hearing and say, yeah, it's gone up or it's gone down because of this.
And, and someone has to ask them to be there. I mean, you just can't expect them to show up, I'm assuming.
I would assume that the listers would do that because they know about the, they know about the appeal. And either they show up or they don't. But whether they do or they don't, the information that we get is that they have no idea why an abutting like property was reduced or not. It was reduced, but they don't know why.
So that should be part of the process that NIMRIC is
Well, we should make it part of the process because this is to help the listeners, not to make them not know what's going on.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, yeah.
Susan, may I?
Yep, go ahead Nate.
This is Nate. So if any of you on this are not aware, I do work for NIMRIC in the assessing department. I don't have or don't know the specific contract with NIMRIC in Westminster in front of me. So I can't speak to what services Westminster has entered in a contract with, that we, NIMRIC is providing for Westminster. If somebody looks at that contract and there are more services needed that are in that contract, like attending grievance hearings, BCA hearings. I'm sure Ed would be happy to engage in a new contract. As far as day-to-day options, if I'm, I'm, I'm kind of not following you Fran, but as far as like day-to-day work functions. If the listers have questions as to why a value changed, they just merely need to ask.
Well, you may be right Nate, and I'm sorry that you work for these people and I'm bringing this up. But I feel like if we're going to get, if we're going to get bids from somebody to do something, then we need to get more than one company's bid.
Right, I think you're talking about doing the reappraisal.
That's the way we do.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think Susan was
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm talking about different things. I, I know this is confusing because I keep getting a message on my screen that my internet is going in and on and off. So I'm, I'm sorry about that.
I was trying to answer
And I know what's going on. Sorry?
I was trying to answer your question about day-to-day assistance and guidance. That's what you said was, was they were having a problem with. You're absolutely right. I spoke about the town needing to go out to bids for anything within that, and they follow their bid process. So we all agree with you on that.
Right.
I thought, I thought you were saying that you, that listers were having a problem getting answers from NIMRIC.
And there are no listers here, am I correct? So we don't really know. Right, there's nobody here as a lister. So someone needs to communicate with the listeners about their needs and whether they ask NIMRIC. Do you know that Fran or?
Well, I, I know that we as BCA members discussed this and wanted to give a message to, to the listeners about this. I don't know if that was done or not. But, I mean, I'm actually mixing things up by discussing too many, two different things. And seeing this is going to be put off until next year, I know we're confusing everything. I guess I'll try to simplify it and say, I hope that when we, if we do decide to do a reappraisal, that we get bids from multiple companies doing reappraisal and not stick with one company. And if we, whatever company that we do make a contract with, that we, the listers need some support for why they did something. Because we as BCA members have questions and, and we don't, like, we don't know why an abutting similar property had, why their value was reduced by NIMRIC. And the listeners don't know why either.
So, right, well, so I think first of all, a discussion with the listeners to see what they expect, what kind of support they expect, what they've asked for. Or maybe they need to know the process better, I think. So, thank you Fran, bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
But that raises another question in between times, Susan.
Okay, go ahead.
If we get any appeals between now and next year, when we've put this as a table, the problem still exists. So I think we need to view our NIMRIC contract as Nate suggested. And, because if we do get an appeal and it goes as far as the Board of Civil Authority, we've got to have more information about why these properties are changing. May not happen this year. We could have five appeals this year. And if that happens, then we need to relook at our contract with NIMRIC and say, okay, we need to have clarification of why this has gone up, why this has gone down. Be it at a BCA meeting or with the listers. It doesn't, as long as the listers can tell the BCA the reason, that's one thing. If they can't, then it's up to NIMRIC or the appraiser, our appraiser to tell us why the values have changed.
Yeah, well, the process may be in there, maybe.
It could be. We, we just need to review it or Russ needs to review it.
Yeah. I agree.
These are not surprise questions. When people grieve, we know it. So you would think the listeners would look at it and say, we got three people who are grieving. If they don't understand how to defend their numbers, they would make a phone call to NIMRIC. I mean, they're there to support us.
How many listeners are there?
Right now, we have just two.
Right.
Um, but I know for a fact that Al was at all of the grievance meetings. I'm not sure about the BCA because I'm not, I don't go.
He didn't come, he did not come to the BCA meetings.
When Fran, was it this year?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know that and I don't know why. But again, he's very supportive with all the questions that they have. He, when we call, they, he comes right back to us with emails or phone calls. So I'm not sure why the, there's a lack of support at the BCA level.
Well, you might
Find that out.
Maybe check on it, Russ, because it was
Really will.
It was the grievance for the property that is
Yeah, no, no particulars Fran, really. I, I, I'll look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did we vote on this? Does anybody remember?
Voted to table it.
Yes, you did. Sheldon and Kevin seconded it and it was five to zero.
Thank you. Can't remember that far back. Uh, half-year financials, quarterlies.
In your packet, you have your half-year quarterlies. I typically ask you to table it, look at it, and we'll talk about it next meeting.
Okay, I, I do have a quick question, just looking at it. The miscellaneous revenue that leaped up by 700%?
Not seeing it.
Various of them.
I'm on the second page, wait, second page. Four down, miscellaneous revenue budget. Yeah, go ahead.
We know we have some moving of monies to, to do. When they're not in, when they don't know, instead of holding it out into no man's land, they put it in there. And Paul will need to go further into it and find out why where it needs to go, whether it's a new line item or, or whatever. So it won't be left like that. There's no need of it.
Okay, just curious. It looked good.
And one quick question, because I, I guess I'm thick-headed. I can't think of why this would be there. On page six, that contract services that we budgeted 10, we've already spent 43. I assume we got some income coming from it. What, what was that, Russ? I forgot.
Um, so I gotta find it first, sorry.
It's on page six under, it's under the, well, it's stacks of town garage. And it's down under contract services, like we're contracting somebody to do work. We budgeted 10, we've already spent 43.
It's part of our grant that we received and I'm pretty positive that it would have, would have been part of the state aid to highway paving.
Okay, I'm gonna say, there's got to be some revenue to offset it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's
And so on the first page, it would be midway down, state aid to highway paving.
Hundred sixty-five. You're someplace, okay, that's what I was wondering. Thanks.
Okay, you want to table that to the next meeting and put it on the agenda? We'll have time to look over.
Yes.
Okay. Gifted memory of Kevin Schrader. Someone want to speak about that?
I'll speak to this and it's just, we're kind of going, we've, I don't know that we've ever done this before. Kevin, Mr. Schrader did work for the town of Westminster quite a lot, actually, cutting trees for the town. And there was a, there was a, an arborist school, I believe, that they were looking for donations to. And I, I didn't want the town necessarily, I, I'm not saying that we should do it, whether we shouldn't do it. I wanted the town to think about it, whether you wanted to make a donation to this, or to this. Russell probably has the information a little more than I do on it. I just picked it up in the paper and I, I just didn't want to drop the ball on it in case we, you as a board decided you wanted to do a memory to him or not.
I guess my feeling is, is as far as, you know, giving a donation to something like that, which is a wonderful thing. That would set a precedent that I wouldn't really want to establish. A couple of things, I'm sure we'll probably, the next time we do a town report, there will be, there will be some dedications to Kevin. Would be my guess. And, and also because it's, you hardly ever see obituaries anymore. Not everyone sees it. It might be worthwhile to put something in the Gazette. Mentioning that private citizens it, it might be worthwhile to put something in the Gazette, mentioning that private citizens can give donations in his name, that would be my preference.
I agree with you. I don't know why we don't do that, that's a great idea.
That's a good idea.
To encourage people to give money, I see, I mean, and a.
It would be an unusual precedent, because then you'd have people die all the time and.
It gets subjective, that's the problem, and though, you know, he's, he's done wonderful things for the town, it would be great and.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree.
It's considered, but Sheldon, but that would be my preference.
Not a problem, I just wanted to.
Yep.
Throw it out there.
Thank you. Payment from school, election costs and postings.
We are up again, and I wish Pauline could speak to her half of this.
She can now, I think, right Pauline?
She's there.
Nope, she can't. So in your packet, you have both invoices that we have and I know we dropped it in October of, of, excuse me, November of, of 2019. That one was for three thousand one hundred and twenty, excuse me, three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. And just recently in October, we spent another twenty-five ninety-six on legal fees, stamps and rolls, envelopes. And now we'll have some significant time and energy into the election that we just, just did. I don't have a number in front of me of that, but I, my end of it, this is what the executive department has taken out of our budget to support the school. And if that's what you want to continue to do, then these will be just paper to file. Or do you want me to? Actually submit them? Get legal counsel involved, what, what's your pro pleasure? This is just, it's been an ongoing thing. A select board member asked me to, to talk about it and so I am. We're going to be out by the time we're all said and done. We will have.
Gonna have roughly three thousand dollars just on the election now, yeah?
I would assume so, Sheldon, so we're looking at almost ten thousand dollars, but ninety-five hundred dollars is my guess. By the time we're all said and done, for these three things.
Susan, do you mind if I ask a question, it's Cynthia.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you tell me Russ, on your cash flow statement, how much of the education tax you do get already for the town processing school bills? There's a portion that you already get to keep.
The treasurer gets one thousand dollars.
No, I mean, they deduct from the amount you owe the school district of the taxes that you build for the education, they.
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head, no.
It's on your cash flow statement and, and typically it's around nine thousand, six thousand, depends on how much the education taxes are. But it, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there is already a portion of the school taxes that you get to keep that is for the purpose of billing education taxes, it's, it's in their calculation already. So it might be good to know that number before you, and it's not really the school's fault that, that this happened, it's the state, they were late with their education rates, but there is a portion you get for doing that work already.
So you can find what that is, Russ, and let us know?
Between Pauline and I, we will, yep.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, if it's three thousand or more, then, then it's covered.
Thank you Cindy.
So we'll wait for that information, is that the idea? Do we have more discussion?
Not in a hurry, it's just information that I was asked to, to produce.
Okay, thank you Russ. VTRAN certification of compliance. You got that?
In your packet, these are the, every year, stating that we do meet the standards that were approved June 5th, 2019. This will be part of the signing that I'll be going door-to-door to get you to, to do. Again, that one's every year. Certificate of Highway Mileage is also a typical and it also has not changed this past year, so it is just a, a quick signing of our certificate stating that we did not change this year any roads, distances or classifications.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Vermont, the VTRAN certification of compliance.
Seconded.
The move by Sheldon, seconded by Kevin, to approve the VTRAN certification of compliance, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Chairman.
Sheldon.
I move that we approve the VTRAN certification of highway mileage.
Seconded.
Move by Sheldon, seconded by Kevin, that we approve the VTRAN certification of highway mileage, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That passes. Thank you. Managers report.
A couple of quick things, the office will be closed for Martin Luther King Day, which is this coming Monday, January 18th. And I also would like to note that because of the construction, the town clerk's office, portion of the, of the office will be closed tomorrow and Friday. They're working right tight behind them and the construction is unbearable. The noise is just ridiculous, they can't, they can't answer the phone, they can't do much of anything, so they're, they are going to be working from home. A little update on the financial processing policy, it is about, probably half-done, maybe, maybe a little bit more than that, the first draft. And I will be finishing that with Paul and. NIMRAC and Sullivan Powers. Those are the ones that I need a little bit more information on and I'll be giving them a call and, and then the, that will be the first draft. Send it out to everybody, have everybody mark it up, add, subtract, do their thing and so we're still trying to get the first draft out by February 1st. And last but not least, the town report information will be sent to the publisher. We're hoping for January 25th, which is Monday, could be Tuesday, the 26th. And then the last page that has the, the folks that are running for positions will be inserted on the 27th after five o'clock to the publisher. So anything that is needed to be changed or added, that's the dates to shoot for, the 26th at the latest with information. And the insert will be, will be done at 5:05 on the 27th. And that's it.
Thank you Russ. Boards and commissions.
Nothing to report, as, as you know, the PC was very productive in their discussions with, about that solar project, they, they did a very good job with that and asked some seriously good questions. And one of them I'll, I'll mention, that was brought up was, the slope of the project is, it, it's not in the traditional way. Typically, the panels run with the slope and that's not, that's not south for them. And so it, they're actually running across the hill. And again, we asked the, what is the efficiency of that? Does it, you know, take it down to like 65%? To, to me, that's not a preferred site, if it's down in the, in the 60s. If it's in the 80s, then, then it is. And so these are answers they didn't have yet and this is something that you guys will be asked to weigh in on when they do get the final paperwork to you in the, in the data. So, that's it.
Thank you. Other business.
I'm gonna throw something out here, Madam Chairman. The town of Westminster, or we have a, a chance at purchasing something. The town of Westminster has 2,349 feet of guard rail cable style that we will have to replace in the, as we keep replacing and retiring roads and so forth. That's how much of it's out there. And at this point in time, there is no used guard rail available, so I just want everybody to think about it. There is, there is a chance that the town of Westminster can purchase guard rails and posts for somewhat of a savings over what we've been purchasing it for. There is none available as far as used right now, I'm not gonna give you a figure on it tonight, just want you to think about it. I will have some more information with Russell at our next meeting.
Okay. It's like where we could find some money?
Yeah.
Good.
Possibly.
Okay, good. Any other business? Date of our next meeting will be January 27th, I'm assuming we'll still be zooming at that point.
Hey Susan?
Yeah, go ahead Nate.
I paused, I was waiting to see if anybody else, if Russ was gonna say, if he was done. This is for Russ, I don't know if Craig, I don't know who was on the board with me when this all happened. So by the state police barracks, across the road from the parking ride, by the driveway that goes down to that other house, wasn't there a sliver there that the town still owned?
There was, we sold it to Roger Fernsworth a couple of years ago, a year, about a year and a half ago.
Whatever they're dumping over that bank is on somebody else's land.
It is now.
Okay, and we're aware that they're dumping materials there?
You're talking on the flats.
I'm talking right next to the state police barracks.
Yes, they completely obliterated the, the thousands of dollars worth of drainage work that was installed for the state police barracks.
Well.
Okay, so the, the concrete that I saw and the asphalt and stuff that I saw them dumping over the past couple of months, there's, we know about that.
The state has been notified also, yes.
Well, that's right into a waterway, isn't it? Is it not into a waterway?
Eventually, but it's not, it's up on top, so the water is, is a, a long ways away. But again, it, it is a, it is a, a concern, I, I, I'm shocked that they're letting it happen, so.
Yeah, I only asked because I thought, I didn't know we didn't own the land, so that's the only reason I asked, I thought we still owned that.
Thank God, no.
And when you say they, we're shocked that they let it happen, who is the they we're talking about, the state?
State of Vermont, they spent thousands of dollars on the drainage system and right now it's being completely covered over.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
Isn't that Agency of Natural Resources, what?
Buildings and grounds, Agency of Natural Resources, wetlands, yeah, name it, they all know about it.
I mean, yeah, but wasn't it, wasn't the Agency of Natural Resources that fined us originally on that project?
Tried to, yeah, we never did get fined, but yes.
Yeah, but we were part of the.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, keep us appraised if we hear anything, Russ.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, date of next meeting, January 27th. Motion for adjournment?
We might need a meeting sooner if things really do change with the legislative details.
Okay, all right, good.
Your regular, your next regular meeting is January 27th.
Okay. Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved by someone, seconded, but also by someone that we adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Not gonna help our secretary any.
I know, you can filler in though Sheldon.
Okay.